Thomas Hammers and the Black, yeah. Mr. Ranger K. African Love E N T. We hate it. Remember we tell you be tell we. Bali. Two years now, nothing we see. For fill a lot while I hear Allah, but when Muay Tony. They love mama, they both mama, what do I got handy? Everything go be simple for we. Kebe na hina. No get sad, the dollar lot, my jaleh get salo, you magiti, I tell you my ina. Bali. My be gone, they handy, they love mama, and they go, my be while I hear Allah, motor top. All the thing you tell we not to eat, we see. All the thing you promise not to eat, we see. You be better than them, mama, who ya hold on there? One be like. Allah, your sister get up, one be food come move bahagaboo. One be move bahagaboo. Alright, alright, class stand, say we are standing up. Greeting. Go fill a who pay my while I hear Allah, Jepenak, Koto ma, Mute, Ade, Mulola. Ade, 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 ba, my Jemia, ade, by your, they gotcha him, my boy, ade piya. The country, they go slow, they pay us, so they no care. Alec, who try to they serve, they wire, no, they fear, but let them wait. We go pull up at them this year. You know, give any, make any, while I would not gladly. If you cannot give any, me I don't know, sir, but we not happy. Mude, they go look at other, I could, he got a, my mother, he got man. God forbid, no go happen. We not want trouble, listen. How much no one they part facing. Mulona, hand ague, Allah, ago yavaya, my mother, they get surround. I tell her, he. All the thing you tell we not to eat, we see. You know, we move home, but any time, I know. All the thing you promise not to eat, we see. Who ya hold on there? One be like. Allah, your sister get up, one be food come move bahagaboo. One be move bahagaboo. Fanboy, move way. Niya dek bele kona mama. Your system too slow, men de black move bahaga. Niya dek be. Connect bele kona mama. This system too hard, me black take bahaga. Fanboy be. Connect bele kona mama. Your system too rough, limba black take bahaga. Connect be. Niya dek be kona mama. Your system corrupt, salo black move bahaga. Bali, turn here ina. Dollar lot, no gama. Move bele, move call, oh Kenya, kek, Corona ilona, kek, my lot, oh man, no galega, lot bluffing my forona. Everything done, they turn out to system. Yale bele, inbo la, while I, you not go see them. They brad them bad. They greedy, they brad them, who is see, so they wire, they set fire. So long go to pick, can you shack, baby, who you hold on? Free education, Allah, who they get, say, move call, oh salo, niya dek, we, Ali, who, ah, who family see? When made the kakia, improve the great family, they got to have, man, niya get salo, oh, my dole, go. They want for use party, for distract me. For make them do better, they no want do one, but they wire, I swear, no good grief for them. But we go change. All the thing you tell we not to eat, we see. All the thing you promise not to eat, we see. You be better than them, mama, who ya hold on there? One be like. Allah, your sister get up, one be food come move bahagaboo. One be move bahagaboo. Timmy, they no come, blah, move by, no, you, I mean, I'm boy. Bali. African Love E N T. Mr. Ranger K. See me, Baba? On a change on a way, right? Bali. Alright. Thomas Hammers and the Black, yeah. Mr. Ranger K. African Love E N T. We hate it. Remember we tell you be tell we. Bali. Two years now, nothing we see. For fill a lot while I hear Allah, but when Muay Tony. They love mama, they both mama, what do I got handy? Everything go be simple for we. Kebe na hina. No get sad, the dollar lot, my jaleh get salo, you magiti, I tell you my ina. Bali. My be gone, they handy, they love mama, and they go, my be while I hear Allah, motor top. All the thing you tell we not to eat, we see. All the thing you promise not to eat, we see. You be better than them, mama, who ya hold on there? One be like. Allah, your sister get up, one be food come move bahagaboo. One be move bahagaboo. Alright, alright, class stand, say we are standing up. Greeting. Go fill a who pay my while I hear Allah, Jepenak, Koto ma, Mute, Ade, Mulola. Ade, 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 ba, my Jemia, ade, by your, they gotcha him, my boy, ade piya. The country, they go slow, they pay us, so they no care. Alec, who try to they serve, they wire, no, they fear, but let them wait. We go pull up at them this year. You know, give any, make any, while I would not gladly. If you cannot give any, me I don't know, sir, but we not happy. Mude, they go look at other, I could, he got a, my mother, he got man. God forbid, no go happen. We not want trouble, listen. How much no one they part facing. Mulona, hand ague, Allah, ago yavaya, my mother, they get surround. I tell her, he. All the thing you tell we not to eat, we see. You know, we move home, but any time, I know. All the thing you promise not to eat, we see. You be better than them, mama, who ya hold on there? One be like. Allah, your sister get up, one be food come move bahagaboo. One be move bahagaboo. Fanboy, move way. Niya dek bele kona mama. Your system too slow, men de black move bahaga. Niya dek be. Connect bele kona mama. This system too hard, me black take bahaga. Fanboy be. Connect bele kona mama. Your system too rough, limba black take bahaga. Connect be. Niya dek be kona mama. Your system corrupt, salo black move bahaga. Bali, turn here ina. Dollar lot, no gama. Move bele, move call, oh Kenya, kek, Corona ilona, kek, my lot, oh man, no galega, lot bluffing my forona. Everything done, they turn out to system. Yale bele, inbo la, while I, you not go see them. They brad them bad. They greedy, they brad them, who is see, so they wire, they set fire. So long go to pick, can you shack, baby, who you hold on? Free education, Allah, who they get, say, move call, oh salo, niya dek, we, Ali, who, ah, who family see? When made the kakia, improve the great family, they got to have, man, niya get salo, oh, my dole, go. They want for use party, for distract me. For make them do better, they no want do one, but they wire, I swear, no good grief for them. But we go change. All the thing you tell we not to eat, we see. All the thing you promise not to eat, we see. You be better than them, mama, who ya hold on there? One be like. Allah, your sister get up, one be food come move bahagaboo. One be move bahagaboo. Timmy, they no come, blah, move by, no, you, I mean, I'm boy. Bali. African Love E N T. Mr. Ranger K. See me, Baba? On a change on a way, right? Bali. Alright. Thomas Hammers and the Black, yeah. Mr. Ranger K. African Love E N T. We hate it. Remember we tell you be tell we. Bali. Two years now, nothing we see. For fill a lot while I hear Allah, but when Muay Tony. They love mama, they both mama, what do I got handy? Everything go be simple for we. Kebe na hina. No get sad, the dollar lot, my jaleh get salo, you magiti, I tell you my ina. Bali. My be gone, they handy, they love mama, and they go, my be while I hear Allah, motor top. All the thing you tell we not to eat, we see. You know, we move home, but any time, I know. All the thing you promise not to eat, we see. You be better than them, mama, who ya hold on there? One be like. Allah, your sister get up, one be food come move bahagaboo. One be move bahagaboo. Alright, alright, class stand, say we are standing up. Greeting. Go fill a who pay my while I hear Allah, Jepenak, Koto ma, Mute, Ade, Mulola. Ade, 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 ba, my Jemia, ade, by your, they gotcha him, my boy, ade piya. The country, they go slow, they pay us, so they no care. Alec, who try to they serve, they wire, no, they fear, but let them wait. We go pull up at them this year. You know, give any, make any, while I would not gladly. If you cannot give any, me I don't know, sir, but we not happy. Mude, they go look at other, I could, he got a, my mother, he got man. God forbid, no go happen. We not want trouble, listen. How much no one they part facing. Mulona, hand ague, Allah, ago yavaya, my mother, they get surround. I tell her, he. All the thing you tell we not to eat, we see. All the thing you promise not to eat, we see. You be better than them, mama, who ya hold on there? One be like. Allah, your sister get up, one be food come move bahagaboo. One be move bahagaboo. Fanboy, move way. Niya dek bele kona mama. Your system too slow, men de black move bahaga. Niya dek be. Connect bele kona mama. This system too hard, me black take bahaga. Fanboy be. Connect bele kona mama. Your system too rough, limba black take bahaga. Connect be. Niya dek be kona mama. Your system corrupt, salo black move bahaga. Bali, turn here ina. Dollar lot, no gama. Move bele, move call, oh Kenya, kek, Corona ilona, kek, my lot, oh man, no galega, lot bluffing my forona. Everything done, they turn out to system. Yale bele, inbo la, while I, you not go see them. They brad them bad. They greedy, they brad them, who is see, so they wire, they set fire. So long go to pick, can you shack, baby, who you hold on? Free education, Allah, who they get, say, move call, oh salo, niya dek, we, Ali, who, ah, who family see? When made the kakia, improve the great family, they got to have, man, niya get salo, oh, my dole, go. They want for use party, for distract me. For make them do better, they no want do one, but they wire, I swear, no good grief for them. But we go change. All the thing you tell we not to eat, we see. You know, we move home, but any time, I know.
Fambolo na kusha, eh, no na hadu, oh. We are on Kanbati. Forget about things where they happen. Now we unsweet chat. Saloon, I know we, oh. Whoa. Let we let for do them bad things then. We dey feel our. Oh, oh, saloon, I know we, oh. Whoa. We are. And if we hurt you, we sorry. We know in battle, we just want to make we are go before. If we hurt you, we sorry. We know in battle, we just want to make we are go before.
Fambolo, Munakusha, again inside this one big family house, and Unakabo. Well, this not a house where we all sidome decide for call. We are. Well, of course, I always tell you, say, every day, we must bring something at the table, because when you get your family members, then you come out now morning, go on the streets, then they expect you when you return for bring something, you can put on the table, and all they share as a family. Because of that, now he make this family house decide for bring you the information concerning Mama Salo, more especially the good, the bad, and the ugly. Well, today, we get another discussion. I mean, we get plenty things them inside the basket where we and Una, they can unfold. But before that one day, actually, come inside the family house, not forget for hit the like button for we, and continue for share the program. Call your family member within near you, as I tell you, the election day, now we doorstep, we no go want tomorrow. Your family member within near you, go to ask you, what in come inside the house today, what did I say, what did I not say? For avoid that one day, tell them, make yourself come and subscribe now the channel, so yourself go be family member, so it not go disturb you. Una relax, again, hit the like button, and ready for can listen to the discussion we will bring you today. Me name, Nabayebure Kablae from the north.
And me name, Nasembe Phe, the freedom fighter. Well, today inside the program, where they can look at the, um, Koutkata, the Waala, the Jekute, the Yakba, where they between the, um, free, the, the Kenema City Councilors, they don't condemn, you know, Jagaban, say, he actually go illegally demolish. They can hear again, some of them are doing, but in case, we just give them a feedback, because we see this thing, they continue from the Kenema District Council or City Council inside. So we they bring to, and I think them, where, um, you know, then they give now, and then what in we be not get again, um, inside the program. European Union, European Union, the observer, they don't, they didn't at all now, for can watch how the election, the tale, you can hear, what in they think, and how they, they support Talek, where the European Union, they get to the country from where they come. By the way, you know, once we don't sit there and talk, say, European Union, and the government, oh, Saloon, don't build, only get schools, they meant, eh? Eh, 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 they not build school, oh? They renovate schools them.
Come and give them a renovate?
No, no, I'll keep down there, not tomorrow, not today. It's a Congo, sir. It's not again. Um, but we can look at the election, what in the preparation of the European Union, and how they wish we very well inside the 2023 election. We same way so go look at inside the Arun Zubayu. Arun Zubayu, when are the NGC man? Don't decide for left the NGC, and then, you know, interestingly, the person we want contest against, that the Freedom City Council, because they feel, say, can the Yum Kela, and a better choice for Ram, it don't decide for left right now, the one way we want contest against, now it is doing support for this particular individual. So we can look inside that particular issue there, inside the program today. And of course, one thing in the USA, we do, with all these program, now, so USA, we basically celebrate, we legend them, there with all these musicians them, and the person we been, um, support that particular, you know, program there, we been say, these are the sponsor, now the African Caribbean, Africa, Afri Caribbean, I don't call them so, Afri Caribbean, then we talk to we about the December program, Gigi Snow, inside the program, for let we see what in, what in Italy, inside, um, the preparation, all of this to life inside the program today. Me name, Nasembe Phe, the freedom fighter.
Well, of course, this, now we are, where they bring, Una, issues of Mama Saloon, we start the ball rolling as, we don't the inside the family house, now they begin the dish, all the dish.
So, um, we find out, say, most of now, one for ten, we are plenty, plenty, thank you, all of the one that we give couple, for let we able for raise money for that, we young sister, we in a Umu. Umu, now this lady, we at some points, have been cutting hand, because then say, if we get some, um, thing with the ambo gam cancer, and then in foot back, we get problem, and then we tell her, say, they go cutting foot. But with three family members, the way they hide, and yes, they all side, able for get a video, they send on to we, and then we come back to the general membership, and say, please, family, this now, we don't see, we know, sadly, this possible, let's help her. And then, when I indeed come, they don't go clean the food, they don't put things them in place, they don't promise an house, they not cut the food, so they for do thing called cut here, put here. So then for do that thing, they would don't get that money there, and now they call that word, grafting. So they don't get that money there, and then, you know, this lady would don't hand over, but let me listen to this lady first of all, let's start the ball rolling with this lady, we come back Gigi Snow.
Hello, me Fambolene. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, any part, you know, dinner, you want? Yeah, me know, now sister, Umu. We even get problems in food. Where I be, they ask for help. For me, they will help me for the sake of God, for season. If you are first, if you are going to the meeting, maybe you are going to eleven million, two hundred. We, we use them for, who do the driving, medical, um, medication. We only are there on verge for now. For over a month now, are there on verge. So we had, we send all the money, they, they, inside that eleven millions, hundred, we, they be send for me. Then today again, they send, send for me eighteen million five hundred. One of the money, when I receive, add the videos, so then look the foot. So I suppose for go do skin grafting, when they cut some part of me body, and stitch them at the foot. So at this procedure, I go do with this money, because I get for doing medication inside there now, admission and all the rest. So I tell Una, plenty, plenty, thank you. I tell Una, thank you. May God bless Una all. As soon I can see, self how the foot stay, because now only the problem, I the toes them back, as soon I can see. The toes them fall, you know, or they say, after the skin grafting now, then then go the, find way out for treat the foot again, the toes them, because toes them, bend on the foot. And they fear falling, no go be gangling box, then they put me, and they on treatment for them. So I tell now plenty, thank you, we are. Now thank you, all the team of we have, now thank you. Thank you to Sister Amnata, thank you to the sister, now here, we, I collect the money too, and thank you to everybody, all man, we donate, whatever little, you know, small, I appreciate everybody. The one that say, if you see me video, sorry for me, they able give me nothing, remember me pan prayer, may God help them, God give them more, so I appreciate so much, I really glad, I really appreciate. I don't know how for tell, now thank you, I tell God, thank you, because I don't they suffer. I don't they struggle so much, because before, eh, we had in the interview, this be don't be a problem in my life, because I just be don't for go, now everything I take, and say, they forgot me foot back, while me hand be don't cut. But we interview, with, we are them, help me on treatment, and fight them for me, and the prayers, and from the people, and, please, everybody donate, so now don't try for me.
Alright, so, um, that's now be. Alright, family members them, that's now be, um, with sister Umu, where we all don't put hands together for see how we be able for help them. Well, I decide for do this video, for make, it tell Una, say, I appreciate what in Una don't do, as family members them, and a happy for make, Una as family members them, able for save in life, into this particular problem, where if you want for undergo, because if you don't loss the hand, you reach a peak again, they say, the foot again for go, but with God and Una help, able for make, able get good medication, where now, the doctors, they don't decide, say, no, they not, they cut the foot again, but then they cut some parts now in body, and go put now the foot, so it be able recover the pain, where it be they feel. As soon I don't hear you, how Sister Umu, they talk, you know, is sad. So tell them, they kiss somebody, it be glad if for something, say, you know, they able pass, eh, 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 cry, because Sister Umu don't tell, we say, before, Una as family members them, they interfere, but in sick business, it does suffer, and it does suffer. You hear you where they emphasize, when I say, it does suffer, and it don't suffer. So it just make this video for tell Una, say, eh, really, really happy, and tell Una, plenty, 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 thank you, for this help, where Una don't render to Ram. So we hope for help on more people inside this family house, by God, in own power. Now that one, they call family house. You help who are they in need, and how you give out, now so God, they open the young way back for replace, what in they give out, they say, give us never lack. So we pray, this unity, they continue, and we dey save more life them, now the world, not only Mama Saloon, we move.
You know, plenty time, and then we will get, something, and then, you know, they get pleasure for help. Especially when it, it reach to the kind situation there, so, but we want for tell, now thank you, because, now really, you know, now two sides to the coin, Una, where they give us support, and we, where they handle the money, where they make sure, say, what in passing for get, now, it they get. We not the stamp out money, we will gather for passing, we go thank God, say, from where we begin, boss, you know, go come up and say, hey, we had, then do this GoFundMe for me.
Yes, I don't think I go.
No, eh, I, listen, you know, in honest, I mean, say, now they GoFundMe, you know, I just, they make reference, eh, then do this GoFundMe for we, then get a one thousand dollar, now, hundred thousand, and then, eh, 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 they do that. Where they make it very clear to you, say, this money, where they get, so, now for you sick. If we not able for menu, our staff will lie, God forbid, along the way you die, that money there, not to our family, nothing, we go just cut part of money there, and help, but not to for now, where they send that money there, and help other people them. I make very much clever than they, even this woman, we tell her, say, where they get this money for your medical, not for any other reason, they say, yes, you know, in case something happen along the way, not to you get, with all money, not to you get them again, we get them for other person. We not the eat them, we not want them, but we dey give to other people them, so we want for be very clear, anything would you do, and he agree, and we thank God, we not it to that point, we go take a money, go to other person. Rather, all the money we will gather, they go directly to Ram, and we thank God, say, we get good news, and all down there, now because of God Almighty Allah, where they can say to Jesus Christ, a lot, some for the Christians, and then you get, you know, other people, and we, you know, a lot of people in the gear, you know, sometimes, they work, you see people, they with the gear. Like, one we brother, you know, where I see, he send two ten for the same contribution, he send two ten. I don't know if I for calling name, but not to anyone name, so, your name, Umaru. I will stop and I read it, he send two ten, for see how best he get the heart for help encompassing them. God bless Una all, Una all, Una all, God bless Una, everything, you know, everything you man don't talk, every little thing, we give, no small, oh, the corner there, small, small, then I would don't put together, so don't get money for them. So we appreciate, now, God bless Una all. I think, you know, one we brother, they know the, the, the comment section, we always like for talk once, eh, eh, say, we the rise.
By lifting.
By lifting others, you know, we not get barrier, you know, we not get competition, and even if not somebody, we get channel, where they do same thing like we, we can promote them, we just feel say no more, the country, now in the force. And we just feel say how other people them, they do things, now the own country, then we for help we self, and we able, one thing about Saloman, then good, then they able help. The international community, oh, the old grappas, oh, eh, then give we forty million, then, nah, people them money them, then things they are, now they do so, now they do so, and exact what to they do so, now they still they do so, where they give we money.
Now, shall say, for them, they pay back.
Yes.
With interest.
Yes. So, Una the dwam, so let God bless Una, Una all, who sound a pullam, let God add for Una, more and more and more and more. Una, we get the heart, one for give, Una, and not each day, let God provide for Una. Una, we not able for get them, but Una, just think of this woman in prayer, let God bless Una family them. We all, let God just continue for bless we abundantly, and let God make this woman, estimate strong, and tell we say, adore well. Now that day, now we prayer, again and again and again, God bless Una, we rest okay, so then they, but still, Una member say, after I do all the procedure, again, for like you say, and those and other things them, so please, Una still, anything we now get, we still open up for that one day, okay? We appreciate Una so, so much, thank you all very, very much, okay? We move.
We fly to the higher heights.
So now jump piece, eh, blama quick one, we see something happen then days, yeah, and a blama, a few days ago, some people, they don't share, 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 but we say, we know who left BN, before we come to we brother, and at the studio, now just robot, because we wait for family members, then for come, see yours, see yours, one side it, now jump now blama, and see how it tale, this not case for PPRC, okay? Um, we come to, and Gigi Snow, now just see, I give this thing quick.
Alright, this.
Now go with this.
They don't have to bother, they protect her. Before we, this are the video evidence, this are the cross evidence. This are the cross evidence, this are the video evidence.
Let me see, let me care.
Yeah, also, I know.
Not to you ask me, you don't get it for us. Not to you possess. They laugh, they laugh.
What is that, eh, blama center?
Now, now that this.
Now me this.
And the time people, they are away.
Now me. And they check her out, what they check her out, they check her out.
He back in the urban, he don't come up, but he. Other man, he took a dog, I miss that destroyer. They go dog, I miss that destroyer, if you go in the urban, you play for him, I miss the urban. Don't go play, 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 now this, you can play the car, trouble, now this destroyer.
Go care.
So, yeah. So, now the blama center this, now the man on this. They go, uh, 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 the torch was in there, uh, uh, the torch was in there. Say, uh, 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 just want me the law, me the law, intake your cost. Now law, now law, who the deal is.
You don't go check, forget the record, oh, good, that's right.
It's very simple.
It's very simple, no problem, no good, that's right. This have, this have, bitter season. Light fire, now the fire with the ritual. Fire with the ritual, light fire.
So, um, now, the Shule and the Mosui, now they don't take the, the, the venture, say, then they ready for, well, any man on a blama, and now we, dinner at the scene, for Mausi, the Jodo say, the one lights, like, burn the banner again, so, now, they should, you know, for Mausi back.
Alright, welcome back. You know, we they talk something, as we, we watch this thing, you know, not, everything get taste, you know, now two sides to the coin, you know, um, but we just pray, um, that I know you know, like we tell, and say, but we just pray, that if thing get for change, they not do anything stupid to this.
Government get for change.
Yeah, nah, well, not things, then not things, then not things, you know, this thing of government get for change, government not get for change, sometimes, eh, where you talk that word, they say, me, I mean, I can feel for crying, because I feel pain. But we just pray, things change. Because, you not go understand, but let we left that one day, let continue.
Well, um, family members them, we don't play the video, you don't see.
I know they talk, what in I they talk, for you calm down, take your speed back, and let we go, we the program, how you suppose.
They don't see me, I get it cut last.
So fine, then you get for taking.
How they grasp, then I saw they cut them. We don't play the video, family members them, I repeat, for make you see what in the young man do, and how it is displayed. As me brother tell you, we they talk something behind the scene, when the video they play, and he very, very sad. He very, very sad, you know. Sometimes, when you they see some of them, they happen, you will they think you go just sidom, they scared by yourself, they afraid. You know, some of them guys, they are, look at the condition, look the young, young man in condition, where they, 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 they misbehave, in the name of, I support this political party, in the name of, now this political party, I believe. You go check this young man, tip for itself, no, they look in condition, but he said, no, fine. But now them, then they use, I, I know, you don't say use, now, now them, they misuse themselves.
Yes, because that's a tool, yeah, just that, the system, we get right now, they protect people like them one day, but I will tell you for real, say, in some case, they know they use them, then they use them.
They misuse themselves, you understand?
Because, if you look at true, 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 sometimes, eh, they not even send out for go do this, but it get for doam, because it feels say, nothing, if I do this thing, nothing, they come up here, nah.
Yeah, the reason, they not go send them, but it a do, and because it feels say, nothing, no get for.
That is it.
Because when this government sidom, then, then, they make sure for empower the supporters, and feed them, with what they, what they make, they hesitate for do, nothing like this.
Well, this makes, sometimes, eh, I can see one particular word, honestly, I know they support the killing of a police officer, never, but when I can listen to SLPP, they talk about, what in happen August, you know, ele- ten, I can smile, because the very day we didn't declare murder, beo, as winner, in Kenema. They own after policeman, they beat them, hopelessly. We all see the video till now. So, when they talk about that, and the only thing we make, that they know, you know, reach to this, because some other people, they wrong, for come rescue them. You understand? But if not, now the same thing we for me, they talk about, so, what in different? And from that time eh to now, Madabio not anything, you know, that's why one day you apply a video now you know been there. This guy they say, um, Samoa come on need for disassociate himself with Adibio, in other words, he need for come out and say, you know, he, he not support anything but Adibio. But I the wonder now, all of the things that they suggest in them, the Fatima statement and all the other statement them, one day Madabio not come and condemn.
Where worst pass with Adibio they do.
So now, you begin for ask, why this guy come up with this thing, then I say, okay, I understand, it's just one recognition. Or maybe, you know, you know, if fish I don't do something like that in a court, all the person they don't do, so insert one for come and say, this thing, someone need for stand up and say. Why someone nah, nah, in, in my own opinion, estimation self, nah, just mere rudeness.
So, so, Shemepierre, as I they say, you know, sometimes, it hard for talk certain thing, they both get for talk and because. We say what they talk about the good, the bad and the ugly, some of them kind youth them here. We the say we are, we not go want for anything like that happen because we all are civil unionism. But let me tell you something, if government change, now just assume say government don't change today, they announce Samoa victory. Someone not can sit down and tell a supporter as then say, people like this on our go do something. But mind you, because Madabio make sure where he sit down, he empower them, and Fatima Bill endorse with some ministers them for telling supporters them for go out and make sure of their rudeness they are.
So, so, in, 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 what in like we go see no more Samoa not go talk so, in me, I, I still feel say, Madabio say no go talk that one day.
No, you not go talk and.
But Fatima, he don't talk that one day for Madabio.
Thank you, and Fatima tell we say, anything we come to the public and talk, now something where he don't discuss with him man, not to be talking.
And based on what in he and a man are green, eh, they come.
Nah, he they can't talk, well now, look what in this man they do, tell me tomorrow they say Samoa don't become the president of Mama Samo.
You know, some of them video there, some of them word they already talk, not to we they talk and, they be don't talk and before this thing. And we get video to effect, video for show exactly what to they talk, that is why we not just to sit down and talk. You know, I will tell you for real, you go come and tell we say, we not like, what in they happen, but you not go tell we say we the like.
And mind you, now many line show, that not the issue, we always we the say we are they tell you say, people who they say, many na SLPP, many na this, stop that word eh.
Try man is him, stop him, stop him.
Many too many, that one they the APC, that one they the SLPP.
Okay, so now, if you begin for talk that word they say, many they them now so they understand, many they now so they day, in fact, that is why.
We not a support that.
Every other thing is posting one for begin talk say, many, them they can say, no. Stop that, they instantly, we not promote anything like that. Because inside the many, you get APC, you get APC. In as much as the SLPP in our demo, that in our for real, but you get them, just like I inside the terminet, you get SLPP get APC, look for example. In the terminet, in a terminet line, one guy sit down, the challenge, that terminet, the challenge people them.
But above what you say, if people in protest, it a go, nah, the people in wear black, nah, typical terminet.
And nah, SLPP, so let me stop the issue of tribality, to say, this time many this, this time them, no, that one they are watching you go say about this there now. So, most of them people are with the video, especially the one, nah, die hearted, APC supporter then.
Of course.
And the other way they do the thing, nah, die hearted, SLPP supporter, so that thing about tribe, let's forget about it totally. Totally, in order fit we at all.
But I get, I get a mind, I get a mind for do some of them here because I see the empowerment way, um, um, SLPP don't give people like the so, soja team, the Pam T you boys, you name them, they, 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 they talks them.
Yes.
They are ready, they are radical guys them.
And interestingly, then they pay them every month.
Yeah, well, nah, I don't play you video, who say, then they pay them one million, one million, at that time.
Yes, and even eh, 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 peace, I didn't don't tell we say, where they give their work for, who said they go pay their six hundred, then eleven. Then they come outside and they give their one million for doing nothing, just for go all around and cause problem.
So you see?
It's simple, we, we started tell we that one day now, you know, not to just make up, we not just want for lie past somebody, nah, thing where they tell we. We started talk them in an interview, we still get them, and they still in our archive, anytime where they talk, where you challenge, we just ask we, we give you proof. We not the talk because we want for talk, yeah, because we not hate nobody, we just not like what in they do now the country, especially. When it comes to the issue of human rights violation, where this government they talk, you know, you this, this government, and we will have a little tell we something, he say. When you talk, when you look at how they technical them, they, they, they measure success, nah, just attempt for what you talk and what you write. But when the people at the measure success, nah, the result and you look at. So, their result, their report, always they can say, the government do this, the government not do this, if you see the government fail past something, must know how nonsense they that they be. Because all what in they need, for example, issue of gas education, no, not to gas, women empowerment, nothing other way they do, and just the make documents somewhere they say, we don't emac this lab. You don't do.
They don't.
You come to the issue of whatever things, corruption, fight against corruption, not to the corruption in the federal, and just say, policy day for this and that, nothing not come up here now. And now this then useful measure, so not for that one, not for the result, some people are the measure, I just what you say, what you talk. Now, no more the measure, but you know, um, I think the people them, now they get the best results at the end of the day, it up to ona. It up to ona for actually think of what in, ona want, you know, for do, you know. Anyway, um, we get a lot of things the way we want for Rob Moore's man, but like we say, the other day, you know, on April twenty seventh, you know, um, when I be the Independence Day, we will get a very successful show now yeah. And for let us, that show they be successful, the person we be mapped to a one. You know, we make we before get something out of that, the, nah, be, um, Afri Caribbean, you know, festival, then they do their show. Every year on a salon from the twenty eighth to the second of January, twenty eighth of December, twenty eighth to the second of January. Let's take this message quickly, and after that, when we bring come, you know, the CEO for now, we can talk about this particular thing quickly, we come back Gigi snow.
The experience in Africa is a completely different experience that you will never get anywhere else besides in Africa. And especially with the African festival is also uniting not only African culture but Caribbean culture as well, so you get to be immersed in both cultures and get to see. Outside of your worldview and it just offers you a new perspective, so yes, I would recommend it.
I had a wonderful experience, it was so much fun, great memories, great food, great people, nothing but vibes. And I am a carnival junkie and I would definitely say that this was one of the top carnivals I've attended.
I could say you have to go and experience it because us just telling you about this or you seeing pictures about it, doesn't really do it justice. Because it's like, just being out there with the locals and just like experiencing the cuisine, just like talking to them and like, seeing how they live versus how we live. You know, it's just like, like, somebody said, like, we immersed all the culture together.
All you need for do, now for go on their website, when at www dot afrikarabianfestival dot com. Scroll down and select the cutting tree package, when at the festival only package. Scroll down and see all what in there on this package, then pick between three and eight months. If you pick the eight month plan, click add to cart, then you will see say, now just seventy two dollar deposit, no more you need for put down. After that, click proceed to check, when at there you go put all your information and agree to all the times and condition. Then select your payment type, nine or so, you just sit on number now and wait for the festival laddie that this December, welcome, we move.
Alright, um, that now be message from the Afri Caribbean, you know, we, um, then they tell me about, you know, the show we get for be, um, from the, um, twenty eighth, yes, this month, well. I'm only can say Gigi Snow, from the twentieth of, um, I call them December, okay, so let we use this opportunity for welcome on the platform, you know, the CEO of this particular, you know, um, you know, show. Welcome to the platform, sir.
Thanks, thanks for having me, uh, weird, thanks for having me.
So, so who that we get so, who, who, who CEO this?
Uh, so this nah, the, um, uh, I go put on co-founder because I get a partner them.
Okay.
Uh, co-founder of the Afri Caribbean Festival, uh, and me named Dana Labor, um, Sarah Leonie and of course by, by Bath.
By the way, I like you, I just love the, the background we use.
Okay, you know, straight up African man, the country close, the.
Shabure.
Yeah, Shabure and the, uh, it tells you, I, I didn't to the, I didn't to the culture man, I didn't to culture. And really within the Afri Caribbean Festival, they bought now for blend the culture, the, you know, we own African culture, Sierra Leonean culture. And the Caribbean culture, all inside one place, Sierra Leone. So, the idea basically nah that, and of course, it occur with other, other thing eh, with, um, nah, economic impact. Of course, economic impact, they from, you know, different way from, from hotel passing, all the way to passing where they sell. Uh, bread and cheese nah, nah, nah treat, kekayda, so all man they benefit for, for man. And of course, salon people then, we like enjoyment, Caribbean people then, they like enjoyment, no other place not eh, but Freetown. So, we the host this festival, we will call the Afri Caribbean Festival, nah, December, every December twenty eighth to January second, this event.
So, 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 so before we go into that one day, you get for cancer within the package for this year, and but I just want for tell now one thing, the last year on our do, um, on our, on our show. Like religious conference be they go on around that side eh, so like, them people are religious leaders there, and Muslim, eh, eh, imam and pastor, they be doing at this, the conference, so like this show they pass. They get attracted to the show, you know, now they say, astafla, astafla, asta, but, but it, it can't watch, eh, eh, they watch what in they happen, then eh, go on go. They long go, then eh, come back, you can't watch, you know, it shows eh, everybody. Everybody get interest for what in they happen, you know, even they, they, they pastor, they say, Jesus Christ, but they not eh go.
Glory, 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 glory.
But, but talk and go to can come, you get stages, you know, um, especially, um, for we the young one, then you get stage them, well, I know, I know two and three seminar to young one. But we get stages eh, where we the, where we the, where we the, each, we, we, we just love to be part of the, you get for mix, you get for promote, you content and other things, and that are exactly what you do. Okay, so tell me about this thing exactly, what in it's like for this year, what in the package for people, especially, the one they really oversee and want for attend this, just take quick to that the quick quick.
Okay, quick, so it, um, we, the thing we do, people in the asper, they oversee and, and foreign at the way we want go, we make create different package for them. Sierra Leone and the asper, um, we say me I get place for tap, we create package for that, um, say, um, Caribbean's, anybody, and we want go Africa, we want for get, take entire, the entire package. We come with the transportation, hotel and all if, um, the party that we, and thing that we involve inside, then set the package. So, um, now, we are this in blue, now they we the, we the host them, so we get package from eighteen hundred. All the way up to, um, five thousand, depends on how you want, how you want flex, you know, if you want in a suite. With all the benefits account with the suite, you know, you pay the price we come for, and so people and all like, some people like for like, for living their life and enjoy their life. You know, we work hard, you enjoy money, so we also able for make, the most important thing, for like, you able for pay overtime. We get like five different room that we can choose from, and each one, you able for go and make deposit. And pay small, small, um, to the, to December, so we make try for make affordable for, for every, everyone. Um, also, what do we do for the Sierra Leone the asper, where the, where the, uh, oversee, where want for go. The ad, we, we, we the place, so literally they, they tell and say, they say safe, able for. Pay as low as seventy two dollars, you make that deposit, seventy two dollars, every month, if you charge the seventy two dollars, seventy dollars, take the last month, you go charge within, now the difference we left. Um, that package eh, you, they get part of all the part, the different event them, we get what we call the, the, um, Afri Caribbean welcome party. We get what we call beach fest, who would plan for dance, bubu and gumbay and make bonfire this year, nah, nah, nah beach, nah, bobo beach. We get pool party, we get juve, where nah, the Caribbean, their own culture, where they dance with paint, powder, and with then water, then spray, spray water, all man dance and enjoy and shake waves and. Look, get a good time, we get the Afri cannibal, where, now we own key signature thing, where we want for able for showcase, we own a close them. We are Afri canna where, we own, you know, we get beautiful, um, man and woman get beautiful close there, eh, we thank you eh. We get also what we call carnival meet lantern, nah, carnival meet lantern, nah, we the actually get, eh, um, lantern. And eh, eh, the can, the Caribbean, their own carnival, all two they join together with the waka, down long, long the beach, go, go get we own. Um, I don't know which, we not still not think on which lantern will go be late, but we get, you go dance with them with bubu down the, down the beach go. Um, you go, or you dance with the carnival people then go down the beach go, we go also call culture clash, where this year, we want for more, bring more cultural thing eh into, into this thing. For like, we able for show is we own culture we get, um, so like, eh, by Boe, so eh, who say come off from the north, with the Sharpe Scott lights, you go bring your own. Eh, eh, your own people eh, with their own culture, want for able for bring a lady Caribbean people, let people eh actually see we, what we say, 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 get. Um, from the culture clash, we get international DJ then who to bring come, we get international, um, soca artist then who to bring come. This year, we want for bring, I for bring, like, one Libyan artist and one Libyan DJ, we still they talk about that. Um, I want for even, even if I able for go into Guinea safe, so since nah, I want for bring the ca- the African country them together. Inside, eh, inside salon, we get also, one thing we do last year, we bring some artists eh, where they draw, then, then create mural. Mural way, then draw different, one side, this salon artist then draw, the other side, the Caribbean people then draw. So, a lot, really they, pan this thing where they educate, of course, we get tours them, we go Bon's Island tour, um, um. The, we want for do the Chak, Chakogama, who say the, um, Chibaz in the day, yes, and city tour, you get the opportunity for choose. Um, uh, two of them, then three tours in the, you get, a lot of Sierra Leones, they not even go Bon's Island and Chakogama, them place then eh, so this is our opportunity. One big thing we just happened today, um, we just solidify, we airline, we nah, Air Senegal, Air Senegal are the official. Um, and airline for this festival, we don't agree for say, they go create flight, eh, um, rate from people eh, where they come off from. Uh, New York, Milan and, and France, so they getting three air, airports eh, we, uh, we go count, we replace later and all the information later. We just actually agree on all the, the agreements today, so if you the Europe, you want go pan this thing, flight day for like you go, if you the America, flight day. Of course, if you the Africa, you already connect man, um, the flight into Sierra Leone, uh, they, uh, they fly Boku Boku. So, I really want all my, I really experience this thing, because this is an experience where, uh, I could tell you say Boku, and they want for be part of them. But because like then Tini da, then Barbados, then side in the expensive, so we the bring a car now, nah, the, to the doorstep, for let all my parts of them. So, I want all my for go website, dub afrikarabianfestival dot com and go, not scared. Oh, you want all the different plan they will get, you can put money down so you can, you can pay less money, small, small later, you can pay less money and pay more spread out overtime. You get up to eight months, um, for eh, for things eh, you affordable, the money might look big. Not put money before you enjoyment because they might.
So, so, a lot of things the way you don't talk, they talk about the one they really oversee, how them for gets and connect, connection, how for, you know, getting ticket, how flights one day for them already. You know, where they just need for be, pay by bit, what about the locals then, the one they with the inside the business, super one, you know, nah, for just oversee people them, or the one they with the inside safe, that's sort of let themselves come in and enjoy themselves.
So, of course, the, the local one eh, we cannot forget the one eh, um, the local people and they say get, they say able for buy. Um, right now, I still, I day in talks with Afri money, um, for make we able for do some kind, um, um, use some Afri money, um, uh, payment. For make themselves go for pay overtime, um, also orange money safe, I'd look, look for, talk to them, for get them people and for able for pay overtime. So you will say, okay, with me, I not go for go all the part, all event eh, I go choose the one eh, where I go go, and then you go able for say, okay, nah. Those who are the pool party I want, or the beach party I want go, um, whatever it cost, we not count that price eh, we the count with the price very soon. You go able for pay small, small, anytime where you get money, you pay your Afri towards, you Afri money or orange money and pay it towards them. So, yes, the se- the Sierra Leone people eh, safe, 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 get for get the opportunity, not only for buy the ticket for, but the ability for pay overtime. We nah, key for, because who they oversee and so all things eh, nah, nah, small, small where they pay them, you go, you charge something, you depend small, small every month, you know, so.
I, 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 I see, I see for, for other people eh, you know, they see PayPal and other things then.
PayPal, if you, you, if you were going to website, you go see PayPal, you go see at InVemo, um, all kind.
Card.
All credit card, debit card, um, all kind way they for pay, we try for make them so, not all man, um.
You know, you know, they deal with Cash App sale as well?
Uh, no, we not do with Cash App and eh, we can, we not do. Uh no, we not do with cash app and eh we can, we not do with cash app in Zelle. Um we come to the payment for the um for the tick, the um festival, because the festival, because um it add for money to now, almost you don't pay, almost disposable, who that pay and all that stuff. So we make um, we make that really. But um one thing where, once the airline come, we can able for accommodate down, because within helping. Um you get, we will get for pay in two, two payments or three payments. The deposit, you can say, okay, well, I go cash up, I'm I go Zella, and we able for money to that one day.
Okay. So lastly, before we let you for go, which now the date again?
The dates that December twenty eighth to January second.
And I don't know get any Boku activity there, so.
Yes, now they will get it actually. No, sleep not it. So from where you come, the where you reach the twenty eighth, take the second party, party, enjoy, um educational thing, you under, you go learn more, but the history of um Sierra Leone, you go learn, go see historic site. So a lot they we um we 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 therefore do, where you can come for this, pan this festival. And my ultimate goal, that for let Sierra Leone be the Trinidad and Tobago of Africa. Let all manner of Africa able for can a salon, can spend their money and take part by this event every year.
You know, one thing we get for talk, we get for car with you for talk about the economic benefit of this particular thing, because as you don't talk about this thing, you know, you just don't click on that. Please take note of that, and we will bring you again for talk about the economic benefit, because how people are good benefit. How even we are, how they sell fish cake, good benefit. How do I want to sell King Driver, you know, bottom belay? You know, if they make them find and can go out, then all good benefit from this particular thing. Thank you very much for your journey inside the program today.
Thank you very much for for having me. Good pleasure now.
Okay.
The experience in Africa is a completely different experience that you will never get anywhere else besides in Africa. And especially with African Arabian festivals, also uniting not only African culture, but Caribbean culture as well. So you get to be immersed in both cultures and get to see outside of your worldview, and it just offers you a new perspective. So yes, I would recommend it.
I had a wonderful experience. It was so much fun, great memories, great food, great people, nothing but vibes. And I am a carnival junkie, and I would definitely say that this was one of the top carnivals I've attended.
I would say you have to go and experience it, because us just telling you about this or you seeing pictures about it doesn't really do it justice. Because it's like just being out there with the locals and just like experiencing the cuisine, just like talking to them and like seeing how they live versus how we live, you know, it's just like, like somebody said, like we immersed all the culture together.
Alright, family members there, that's now the African Arabian Festival show we get for happen inside December to January. Well, I believe say some people are not the pack them bond with them now, small, small. I mean, they luggage them for on dong. I go enjoy our mama salon, sweet, sweet salon. Hey God.
Now, since we talk, we talk about sweet salon, you know, me eat just the bounce and me see. You know, but people then talk something, but and I know, and I know alone I be pessimistic, I just be optimistic, you know, and I get his courage, so it go happen and all go attain. Because it's my very good, I may go find forever all jambody, you know, when the head good, go ahead, make soon now, you know what I mean eh?
Oh, you get a red cup now, yeah?
Yes, you you know, you know what I mean eh? It's just the go, like that guy, we be get a big belay, we the, the dance, they gonna go, they make so, you know, I'm saying thing now, but anyway, it's okay. And uh we, since we're talking about election term, something that we very much disturbing where they go on, where we need for talk about quickly. This year of the ID card, especially the time where APC all them press conference, and they go do big demonstration, we get a message for now.
Well, family members there, as me brother they tell you, this is very, very serious, and we get for take them serious. As we they talk, um you set now a responsibility for help, for pass on this particular message, because people they want take advantage of this press conference, where APC them do concerning the ID cards them. What's an advantage where most of the people and they take right now? Some people they pass on wrong information to people that we not to understand, say, they need for destroy their ID cards, they have not to, they why again, and they use for vote. Well, we the help, and we want make Una safe help for pass on this message. Do ya with family members them, especially that we brother, we sister, we auntie, we mama, we papa in our village, where people can feel say, quick, quick, then they go for go big fool them, for tell them what's them, just for misuse them for within their wants. We want for make we all grab and turn up, make we push this message to we people them say, make nobody not come and tell you say, destroy this ID card, spoil this ID card, burn this ID card, to where this ID card, as APC don't talk, not to this ID card again, we the use for votes. Do ya. This ID card still secure them, keep them, who say you keep them, because now in, now you right. Because if you not get this ID card time for vote, you not go vote. And if you not vote, you not able create that changes where they cry for. If you not vote, as you say, you want for vote for poor care, take Cabio, if you don't plan and ready for that. If you not get this ID card, you not able for do all of that one day. So now, I can say some politicians, they they send people them for go give people them what say, Una spoil the ID card, not to eh, then get for use. Do ya. Do ya. Not enough for make person big fool you, not enough for make person misuse your thinking, for within in ones. Make we all, this not to we had no more, you say for the list we so, make we all help for pass on this message to we people them. APC, they raise a concern, say, the ID card not okay for the election. That not means say, they not get for use the ID card. That not means say, somebody for go tell you say, point this ID card. Then there is then point to ECSL. Well, me and you not know, waiting go be ECSL then respond or then feedback. If then they change their ID card here, or they not they change them. So now we still secure the ID cards there until we get message to ECSL, say, then they change them. And even if ECSL come and tell you say that they change the ID card there, still not play them all. All are normal, because as far as me concerned, ECSL just like you have to Cabio. If they say make we can eat, wait, maybe open that pan, make you see the rest. And even if you see the rest inside, wait, make them begin for it, because already the rest we say inside, now what is? We not get for go now, I believe. So do ya, we the beg with people them, and we the beg with our family members them. Make we all come together and pass on this message to we people them, make everybody continue for secure ID card and keep them, who say safe. Because if you not get them, you not get for vote too, and nobody not come and tell you say, then they change them, or they not they change them. So all waiting you don't see until you see waiting you want. They say, that devil, where you know, he better pass. The angel, where you not see it too, so do ya, make we secure their ID card there.
Ah, me 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 name, I not care ID card, now just that paper, now they give me. So then they are could just to the way I'm as well.
Not to wear them.
Even that paper where they give you soon, now for make sure say you keep them. That one we then say, ah, test station. Not say me next, they not give me ID card, so I not go call photo. Not do one more, not do one today, not do one tomorrow. Make sure say, that thing where they give you attestation, even the attestation, go to. Uh, well, by Boe, you know what thing they can do? They count some people there, they say when I ECSL, they say then they carry this tar we back, make okay there where I the card.
Mm mm, mm mm, not do one more, because if you do one. We still for the buy bag of rice one million, because I did it goes well.
Ah, wow. Okay, if they can say now, then they give we a micro credit. Make okay there we ID card, okay there we sleep.
Not still give nobody ID card, oh, you ID card for always there now you earn, because they go use all of their things there for take your ID card, when are you right, now you earn now.
Ah, by Boe, what's in track and so now, what's in me could do now? If they can't put money before me, I could eat now, I could just take a, now I could okay then the card. Wait, now ID card, now those paper, now they, me I could just take the money, I eat them.
Mm mm, not still give nobody ID card, even they give you money. That money where they can give you, they eat and dish not eat them. Think of the five years suffer, we get for suffer back, we don't suffer first five years. So now, if you still mistake again, pan that ID card there, now another five years sufferation. So not take anything big, pass that five years, so they will come and give money today, say, give me the S I D card.
Eh eh, by Boe, what about if me can say or uncancel or income now, you come meet me, or me me unable to come, me say make I care me ID card, make you keep them for me fine, fine one.
Same be here, make people they still not give nobody this ID card, because all of them people there, some of them go take this ID card, especially who say they know say, the party where they not want for make you win, get Boku people them. So then they take their ID card there, go with them for make that party where they like win, because of waiting, them they gain. Not for the people, oh, so give you ID card, do ya, not give nobody.
Hey, by Boe, this is don't want now, oh, now we youth leader, now in Kai can tell me say, I'll make them get that, get that their ID card them, get that, get that their all people their ID card them. Make them just go keep a number, election, you know, they are taking.
Still think say, that youth leader, in get the party where he like. Well, so tell that the party, where they plan make me and you suffer, the youth leader like. So because of that one day, not trust nobody, that ID card, for they like your life, if I secure them like your life, now you right. If you mistake, give anybody that ID card eh, the time for vote, you not go see that person they for go vote. What's it go happen next? We the continue for suffer, so do ya, not give you ID card, so nobody keep them to you, Seif.
By Boe, thank you. Me I don't care this message here, me I not, I not cooking nobody can. I could keep them tight one inside me, but some like I can keep me money for make person, me begin safe, you not go see them at all. So thank you, thank you. This now message, we find for you, Seif, for the Yuki, so yeah, now.
And this now message, where you come out from we had, and we family members them, do ya, all your ID card with to earn. Not enough for make anybody can big fool you, for take you right, now you earn. Remember say, we don't suffer for five years. If we mistake, we the ID cards there, now another five years sufferness. So for avoid that one day, not give nobody your ID card, trust no one but yourself.
Now they want that too, you ID card, now you life, you ID card, now you future. If you take and go give somebody where you say now you believe, that person there, he get waiting in the thing go, remember say, or two not get plan for vote at the same side. And if he faints, but you say you have vote, who say, you not for vote where in order day, in the keeper, your ID card eh, you know this here again. And if you there, you not vote, say you have vote, I go make your party lost election. So be careful of what you do. Now go quick one inside Free Town City Council and take this message, we can back this now.
You can imagine Madabio in administration, for everything where this woman, this strong woman, this phenomenal woman, what would do in job? Then they beat on the police.
Yes.
Then they can't go cut, the kind of benign man in a in a tribal list. You will see this kind of woman, you call her a tribalist? Absolutely not. But this woman, what she don't do, after somebody come, it will drive a motorcar, they take what they want on their hand. The woman say, eyes. They come, and when they talk about cleaning, whether they tip, demand they wagon face, eh, on my face, the woman say, eyes. Not put this us alone come for, this woman, what they talk so today? Now a business woman, now more, now woman will land book. Now woman will believe in this country, twenty twenty eh? Now fifty six billion, nine 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 parliament said that for give this woman for one decision. Twelve percent of that money, they nine they give this woman, this man means. Fifty six percent of that money day, now beg, you go beg, for they happen. Thirty two percent of them, now business them, where this woman they talk to, they make it happen. When I look at traffic, you know, the traffic, how to have the effect we got here? It affect progress, because when one motorcar broke down, the other city shut down. This mommy, this woman, this beautiful woman, this woman was strong for, we 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 feel say, Freetown go better. They don't count what they call a car cable, a cable car. When I notice a cable car, now where they put a cable, when now five thousand in each hour. But if they trust for people them, avoid the traffic that this city. As it does so today, parking lots, this money there right now, for begin build parking lots for we. But it rise, even when Madabio that they destroy them, then they curse them, then they malign them, then they put that they try for stop them, this woman guys. It rise not only in a year, so for the entire world. Now this that the woman where we, with the threat, but all possible means, because we believe in Sierra Leone. As I said today, me me can't eat, a probe it, are they men, are they risk it?
Okay.
Number one, they risk it. They come out Senegal, they can't a year so. Me daddy, Zuba who, that full of tongue he come out. Me mama, not to me name, winner one. But any human being, we can at this country, where begin talk about tribalists, call they say they cure them, they affect the other people eh, you this affects me as a Muslim cure. But tell you say then, do you bad because you not get job? How could Muhammad gentle, it get the audacity for come and tell me that now with this one, where it's incompetent by every sketch. And I'm not afraid for calling him, because this that the, and conventional wisdom, not a calling him, I'm gonna call.
By the way, that is something, I think the message where Arun Zuba who pass, may I not get interpretation for Arun. Arun speak like any, I don't know if I answer Pedro it. But in fact, i- if, now me and me, I know they talk nothing again, because I would not speak it on. And this time be the person where you have for challenge Mayo. But he don't see within not the thing where you know me, they see before. Now he don't say, ah 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 ah, bear ale, I don't go down for you, adobale. I say, logo together. So I not me, me not get nothing for add on top that particular thing there.
Well, I think say I just get small thing for add on top there, you say Arun Zuba would talk like a patriot, right? And indeed, now the same thing I see inside him, especially we reach now the size say, this not the person we have one contest against. But I decide for stoop down because of waiting I see inside this person.
Well, interestingly, before this term safe, I won't be always the talk and say, Mayo not a good person, but he want for challenger, because he want for can do more.
Yeah, yeah. So I think say, if now so we the look at politics now salon, we not struggle much like how we the struggle so. Whenever you know say this person did there, and he capable, he get the ability for do what he did do, so we get the understanding for do, waiting is supposed for do now this area, for make this area move from one step to the other with for calm and support. I just like waiting the man they do, as you say, I own a a message, in not pass on for insert. And you will understand, you understand, waiting it talk. Now, this same I will no one contest against Mayor Aki Sawyer Ivan. Now, now then the worker as a team, so for campaign for Ivan Aki Sawyer. So it left to people them inside Freetown, for see, with the other people them, they see inside this woman when Ivan Aki Sawyer forget the support and the chance again for the mayorship inside Freetown city. We move.
So we go again inside the same um city, city, now we go quick in uh Kenema, outside, then still get issue with Jagavan. You know, with regards, walk where they go on and walk where they say Jagavan not supposed for do, you know. Um now we go quickly, and let watch this um right top, you know, as I go attempt for either in quick, quick, you can look out to Jagavan again. You know, the Kenema District Council, they condemn Jagavan in action, you know, inside Blamaton. Basically, waiting that mean, they say, the chief administrator. Basically, waiting that mean, they say, the chief administrator for the Kenema District um District Council. When Ahmed Shakuba Kuruama, he condemned Jagaban, as he say, Jagaban illegally take action for demolish the council facility inside Blamaton, where now small boat chief don't. They say, they make this statement very clear, it's our engagement between them, we get to this paramount chief, PC Daffy Bania. And all the stakeholder them, now small boat, small boat chief don't. He tell the stakeholder them in Blama um town, um say the council um which, where, where, where they get support from the government, the central government. Not always the, the, they come to the aid of the people them, don't they respond to the needs of the people them in terms of delivery, and, and waiting, and waiting the people they want, you know, where they don't they come and give the people they wanting inside that particular, you know, um chief down there, when now the small boat chief down. And he said the district, at large, when at the Kenema district, they don't they make sure say the government don't they support them for doing things them inside inside and they. It's same way so I'd say, he say, in me, in in see one video where they go all around, you know, now the social media, as they say, one Jagaban. Where now politician, you know, the um for demolish and, and, and build back the community center inside Blamaton, and allow continue for it. Inside Blamaton. Sorry, okay, inside Blamaton, and this particular person not even come to them for make, he go able for talk to them now the district council, you know, for say um this not the thing where he want for do. The chief administrator, he continue for say, the council not against any um policy where you want for a give interest, or want for show concern, or want for help the people them. As that could complement the effort of um the, the service, where them now the council and the government, they give to the people them, you know. And therefore do am within the law, um as then they go, but he say, this one, when I they call Jagaban. He say he do something on the contrary, you know, you know, you not follow anything in there at all, he just go for go broke, you know, for the council in facility. Eh eh continuing for say, um eh eh continue, if all I. He continue for talk about some of the activities, some of the strategies, and some of the developments then, you know, where the government don't they come with. You know, through the council, inside the chief down where they call small boat, as he say, from starting starting from um the maintenance of ninety three point two kilometer road. You know, where they don't construct thirty two eh and call back then there, um um side away, you go see now small, small bridge them. And several bridge them as well, and same way so they know rehabilitate six schools them, then they construct. Then they construct eh eh, it reached a center there, and they don't do more than market, yes, EU tell we say them build market in Blama, two markets them. And all that things the EU through the council, yes, that that too, and same way so talk about the wash, the wash project, and same way so talk about the funeral home. Now banda eh eh everything, um banda ma, you know, he say all this now small boat chief down Kenema district, he say um he want for make lady paramount chief them, when a paramount, sorry lady paramount chief when a Daffy Bania. And stakeholders them, now small boat chief drop, and through the council, for let them benefit serious one from the central government, you know, in working, good work and good collaboration, good join on business. Where don't they go on between the stakeholders and a boat chief don't, and that of the council, thus this now basically thing, the council say with regards this thing, he say, so it doesn't, basically highlights now the things that we say they don't do. And interestingly, I've been listening to European Union today, maybe they tell me about the things that we, they don't do in Blama. But yes, naturally council, but not European Union, now in do them things and they saw yeah, some of things and so. But again, if somebody want for can do eh then things there, what we go do before we begin, I, I, I like to move and things there. Log go pick, we been talk to Jagaban, inside one of a program there, hello, yeah, you waiting Jagaban be say with regards this kind thing. He deliberate for like we come with this particular city council, this council inside, and come again with Jagaban inside, we come back just now.
You know, me not the type of person, I need to ever say anything what I may go for do. Anything, whether they know me from what, from childhood to now, anything was, if I tell you say I go pay your school fees now America, I did one. If I tell you say, I go pay for whatever it takes for make you go overseas, I go do one. If I tell you say, I go do this, I, I not ever, now I make anything what, me not a very thoughtful person. Anything what I say I do, I do do all the calculation, who go give me possibility for make I do one. So why I say I the go Blama, why I say I the do things there for Blama, Blama now me hometown. And wallahi, nobody, nobody not go able for take Blama from me. Now they are born, now they are grow, I know there be no other town who will give me peace, reach Blama. Now Blama I reach today, I feel like say, this now me hometown, because I'm the hometown, you know, now the people they know me. You understand, now they are grow, so if I say I the do things for Blama, people then they take and make and, but me the thing is what the people then they say, in any bother, now what me they do, now I the worry about. Because I not get control over what the people then they say, why for worry, I need to worry. So the solar system, why be say I the put for Blama, I tell Blama say, I go light Blama like lantern. The whole corner of Blama, then go get lights, and I did do one, they don't put the lights in there. I tell they say, I go pave the town, I go pave up, and that community center is just unfortunate.
So what you say, what you say pave, what you say pave, what exactly they do, now for just grade the, the streets, like when come back we see potter, potter?
Well, me main object is for make I able for concrete the town or tar the town. Because right now the town eh, the erosion is too much there, the roads them don't narrow. You know, because of the holes them where they dig, so Blaman have been vibrant town. Blaman have been town who be open for people there, for business people there. It's just unfortunate that the town don't so politicize that, even goodness one can at the town. People in the gets eh 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 jealous mind for that, you know, I not ever see any country who reads alone, who somebody want bring goodness for improve on a young life. Just because, you know, then you party, you they stop that from happening, now only Sariol I see that, and it's very unfortunate.
So since you talk about that one there, are we here but one news? You, in this you small eh video, you talk about you de broke the community center and build that one. We see, um I think it was the, the Kenema District Council, you know, challenge you say, you illegally.
Yeah.
Did demolish or want demolish the community center, and that not case for you.
Well, the thing is, it's very unfortunate, because what happened is, the community comes and cry to me. Say three years, this thing done there, no not get community center. No not get who say, then they meet for sit down. Big big cottage tree, now in for done, it broke, it broke the building. You understand, so what thing happen is, we pay somebody, let they remove the cottage tree. So we go see.
So who say the cottage tree for them, he stay there for the, for some time?
It be for three years.
Three years, okay.
For three years, the thing they done there, for three good years, eh they done there. I may not be know about this, wallahi, if I be know about this from day one, like someone tell them if I don't get new community center by now. But I don't know, until when they bring account to me attention, this last go ago.
Hmm.
They bring account to me attention, say, this community would suffer for one thing, will not get community center again. I say eh, what happen with the community center, they say cottage tree, big big cottage tree now in for them. And the day when the cottage tree for them, they begin event, now that building there. Now God now in save the people who did it, then be just don't come more, who the tick for them, eh can forbid, don't kill a lot of people there. So I go there myself, I go there, I go visit the building, I see the cottage tree there. So we get for, get somebody for get a power saw, and remove the, the, the cottage tree. And want for see how best would develop the thing, for make people them, be able for get a community center.
Hmm hmm.
So that was my intention, you know, and I've been promised and say, then we get a community center. So we go, we talk to the chief, we talk to the stakeholders as them, for see how best to be able for help them, for put a community center for them. For make them will be happy, you know, but they stop them, I have to rely, that they get the right, so we now be able for.
Who does stop them, who does stop them?
Ah, I get a call from the chief, the chief say the people then come out Kenema. Then go meet them, then tell her say, they reset, they want for work on the community center. This now council thing, no not for do am, then for don't go first to the council, then for go do this and for go do. The chief tried for make them understand the needs of that building there, and the, the thing where they help for the people there. Because there is no way for the people there for gather, they get events, no not get side who say for go hold up. Now the only place down in a Blama, who events they take place, you understand? So the chief tried for make the letting reason out, but I'm not able, but the chief himself eh do what he get for able, so it.
So, so, so I think there where we can watch now the social media, when you see um certain people and begin talk about something. You know, the government they take action on that area there, for example, especially this area of this um I call them, the community center. Yes, and we see, then don't begin again for talk about the road. Say the responsibility of road, then at the hands of the government, you not feel say they go get for stop you back.
Well, if they stop me, alhamdulillah, I wouldn't stop, me I just feel like say, as a son of Blama. Now me own duty, if Allah bless me, for share me own, they say charity begins at home. So if I the go for go make me turn, if they stop me, we go stop, we not go challenge government.
Hmm hmm.
You know, but if I feel say, I for help me people them, the water or the roads them no become problem. I, that is in I be position for do that, but if they can't say no, I'm not supposed for do am, we go care, we go apologize to them, and we move on. You understand, we move on to other things, what they hope we able for do, without any problem, we not the challenge government. You know, if government says stop, we stop, you understand? But we go, we go try as much as we able, for bring relief for the people there, now the turn there. Well, if we had self self, want for go alone, because we think say, now we country. But the government say, make we had not pass now the airport, we don't they go, alhamdulillah. You know, eh God, this is sad, eh really, really sad. The way our politics they go now alone, eh really, really no good for the country. This not of a one party against self, but any party with this short of behavior. Now it cost now the country, why I use that word there?
Eh, Zena Jave.
Ah, me I de foul. I de foul, now eh cost now the country, Shembe Pierre, because you as a government, you get a lot of work for do. And at the meantime, not to everywhere, you they will stretch you arm, you understand? So if that be the case, somebody, when a son of the swell, come now the place where if he say now they he born. Well, the government not get chance it for make this place, now me, individually, make I come and make this place, because I think say yeah, I'm hometown. I think now you right for do am, and when you do am, I think you don't help the government. But because we get a ruddy system of politics right now at the country, it will ever not good for the sitting government. This man, what he they do, for me, I not think say now something bad. And the promotion where it go it, now this particular town where now Blama, I don't think say not bad. But as far as Kenema is concerned, some of we be know say, he de reach to this peak.
Sorry, I not cut the word there, let we take one simple example. You know, I love this guy because he talk one thing, say charity begins at home.
Hmm hmm.
Let we look here, starting from Madabio, Anes Baykuma. And all the other politicians them, where you go now then turn them, how it like? Madabio in turn I it like, Anes Baykuma better, he do, he would say another thing in a evening, you understand? But let we can now to all of the other politicians then, I think now the only politician this. Because the other one then in the below, now they host, now they village them, but guess what in the bill, hotel, guest house.
For themselves.
For themselves, because they can't income back for them, but this man, now the only politician, we me don't see. We don't put thing, and for the public, no way they put them, imagine, he go make road block and say now for pay tax for me because they would, and not they do am. Now the only positive, you know, I draw, I love something we been talk the last time, he say, me not a philanthropist. He say not Muslim.
And a Muslim.
And a, exactly, waiting a Muslim, he say, and he say, the, them way feel say, then a Muslim, and then are the best politicians. Because they know exactly, waiting and waiting then for do. So this exactly now the thing in this, where we the look for, for see, in any political, you know, you know, you know, um um, I mean, you know. Competition, you know, as we the go all along the way, but anyway, continue.
So as I they say, and the man, I like the way I they talk. Eh they do, because if he say eh a Muslim eh for do am, but if them, when are the sitting government feel say, because they get the power, they get all what it takes for now. Now then they take care of we are, as Waloski calling caretaker, if that come and stop them say Jagaban I have born oh, but you not get rights or can't develop yeah, alhamdulillah, eh they left. Now make I tell you say, if we self, say we the go alone today, Madabio, say we are not for mass now this country, well, alhamdulillah, now they get the power.
Start me not like will.
Pull up the hand as in comments.
He say, what he make Madabio not ask, well, they expedite, expedite for go back and I will come, that is something. You know, we case, I had for theft now court, you know why we case had for theft now court? Because anything where we the talk, we get something for show, say, now this so, and then do, I make we talk this. So if me get all of the evidence then based on what I the talk, I not just the sit down, we know the sit down, we talk something out of we aid. Where they talk something based on what they give me for talk. What he Madabio in team give for talk, now they talk, the good, the bad, and the ugly, now they talk, so how you go set up person there? The first question where then they ask you, okay, this person tell we say, you say, um um, for example, we not the kill again.
Now you talk am.
You talk am or you not talk am?
You talk am.
They are talk am or not to what in I mean, okay? Um this person say, you woman say, then form of justice people there, eh talk am or you not talk am? And no, eh talk am or not to what in I mean, eh how you set anything in there? Okay, we come out today, you say, this person say you government, he, he send people in a market and he go next wall. You do am or you not do am, no, the security force them bound for put things there in place, you talk am, now you do am, and then we talk am. Okay, that very the day, when they do that in a market, then people have say, you are a woman, I celebrate, when I go beach rally and other things then, eh happen or you not happen, no, and we be there about one family business, why is that they they happen, eh happen or you not? We case that for theft now court, so all of them, from their best lawyer, to the, the attorney general where they get. Say can don't, you know the offend person have for nothing, say can don't, you understand eh? Then no, no go able for theft that case then at court, we not, we, we, now good thing now, we not, we not to audio with the pool.
So Shembe Pierre.
So, how they go, how they go ask for we now?
Shembe Pierre, for your life, for your life, upon all them proof there eh, the kind dirty bit eh of justice.
No, 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 that's two different thing, this one sister media ask, now for the, the government, like when they say they ask, or they buy oh. Let they ask for we, for return now we country, it not easy, because the person where they can the policeman, they can meet we say una na, una they pan cause problem now that country there.
I understand, but I think I said for they don't begin act from ninety oh one.
It's now, okay, so we will just say part, all the thing they talk not to lie oh.
Eh, eh young cool, eh 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 minister them, they fake, I don't know it type of compare. Madabio for waste the way beginning talk about, I never in the counter, you get eh 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 Kenema Gongoliwa boy. In self come, um as a government where they do something, a small, small boat, we eh, so, 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 so don't talk. Eh eh eh, this government and this government don't eh get, take to the election, they cancel right, I never know.
So, so, so when the policeman in come it, you say, by brother, you talk them things, I'll say yes, we talk ah. Why we not talk ah, that are the question we follow, you say pa, oh no know what talk ah, but look then tell ah.
But this is start me forget, we would not, we, 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 now we don't tell them say, if caretaker bio they are come now the area who we de, especially the city, where we de. Now we forgot attack caretaker, who not they wait for they call we say, caretaker say.
And interestingly, policeman go the day.
Policeman go the day, and even when they talk ah so, he left one day to election, one day, or one hour to election. Caretaker bio mass who say we de, this not a joke, we now we the attack ah. Policeman go the day, so we not they wait for like caretaker, you say, that one the way they talk so, let them bring them for me.
Interestingly, I know what they go do, because interestingly, when you go do them thing in the policeman again for eh eh, hold your hand, be on your back, force, put in a gun and lay steady, yes, they will be videos now, yes, we don't do with that. No, 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 to that day, that are just the start of the business, that just the start of the business. Because some, some tell, and the people are not collect for see that first hand violence, but when they go into the matter now, they will see say, oh oh. Then people are get using for do it and do.
But of course.
Now like way, that guy one eh eh Macron slap, he lob and stop and slap, that mean it say, if we they come, they grip, grip am. They not use pinion, pinion power, but then grip am, they crangle, then now, where they don't crangle, the question now, why?
The man not come say.
Eh, now they tell it ah, the question now, why, and then when you say why, this are the reason why I do that day. And the, the man may get some baseless point, some simple point, it's not COVID time. He can give you an, you not the leader, why he was giving you an, and they say social distancing, you are. It's not COVID time, he can give you an, you not the leader, why he was giving you an, and they say social distancing, you are can give me COVID. He give one line for like he count his sense man. So now look country them, you understand eh? So if me, Madabio tell we say now, so, 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 we talk about the governor too. Eh, one for deny, eh, in fact, record and day, then just, we just need for give you password number and can inside your account. And see all what you talk, the good thing I never talk say, go and da, go and do this, then, now what in the happen now, the systematical is how they go with. So how they go do them things after we?
Anyway, so exactly now, he dey go on Jagaban, they go with some developments now in tongue where na Blama, well, this government. As you already tell you, Jagaban at the past, we been go a whole meeting.
By boy, one thing we annually forget, especially Kenny Man, the leadership na Kenny Man, I know they talk about the people they who we not, we not eat and not drink. The leadership na Kenny Man, they get one thing na they aid say. Anybody we link to APC or if, now even APC na power, them, now then they refuse. You know, you not like, like, I keep say ah, when na the government they refuse. For give am what in need forget, and then they suppress ah, but Kenny Man, now then they refuse the government. So now, Jagaban they not say anyhow it be, APC more takes more credit say for say, a woman down there, they do this thing, so, they not want that one day.
I know.
So they get for do that, not only first thing this, even though I own at the benefit, they tell we inside there, the, the tongue. You see the, the, the boss then, government boss, the guy fasting inside eh, pass we, then tell they don't be fast to mutkar in a jeep where he sit on. Then big jeep, the way in a bounce, the bounce pan eh, by the way, but any motor car, pu, 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 public transport car, the fasting on the side, they still say no.
Esar.
So it not, it not, it not, it not surprising, it not surprising. You know, interestingly, before this thing, I be the one that say, Blama, 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 I don't forget, say na Blama, Blama, Blama. Then I can, nah, boat then, then I can say, oh, you see, you see them people ah, they get, they get different body mo. Inside both city, both district, they get body back, small, they get other body. They get bo, he dey, he dey na, na, how they call ah? Um, um, along the highway, like you know, say the boat checkpoints, they right? The highway day, I don't forget how they call that particular way to it, they get body, they got a body. So it be confuse me for both these.
Bo inside bo.
Yes, then you get this other small boat back inside that way to it eh, I don't forget the one ah, bo, another, Gina GB, oh, they spell ah. I not forget with the in chief dome, but they get another one na the highway, so that is it.
Well, family members them, Kiate Cabio in government say, what in Jagaban they do, you not supposed for do am. Before you do a salon, make you go do ah, anybody in country, Ghana, USA, no bond, or go do ah Nigeria, it does stop ah. This not the politics where they go on a salon, you as a government, who say you ah no able, if somebody come out say, no, make I can't develop yeah. Where you not to, not to, not to, not to share a nightclub, you go build, as would the measure to some ministers them, where they go build guest house, where the money, they come back to them.
Yes, in any other business.
You know, this man.
And interestingly, they look at them, now they get stuff.
In a giveaway development.
Now they want know what they can inside eh.
They develop and give away to the people back. What Kiate Cabio, now young cool, he say make you not do am. So now, when I see what you don't read now, babala, babala, at least, these same people, before this man they do, he called the chief them. According to the interview, what he tell we, called the chief them, he put them down, all meeting with them. Then give am go ahead, well, the council then go see though, they give with the chief them say, this go ahead on a give, not to in the favor of SLPP. This man where they do this thing, now APC, tell like way don't build the road, they write APC na the road. Or the solar light eh, right, now when they light oh, they light the hall and they make APC.
I wonder if they not give for play let in the safe.
Oh, you say, if they not stop the road, if you say they are, they know play eh, so they don't stop, they don't stop Jagaban in development. But.
Within the sand water, you say for crab you back.
Yes, ah.
Now that whole man for no, who size alone or inside alone.
Kiate Cabio, thank you.
And we not go on the line quick, quick one and begin see what we get from family members then, today na one minute thirty seconds, and then we move quick, quick one. Where they take few calls say no more, and then we ah, end up for um wrap up the program today, thank you very much.
We go on the phone line, Papa, Mama, them brothers, sisters, and do you ah, when I call and tell you, it's not safe, think about this, wala, where they go on na the country. Hmm, but she am be appear, uncle, you don't work oh, Kiate Cabio don't work, he work, say people, all they can't develop the country, stop them. See, we not no come, the person we be, they go and waste money, say they go find investors them, now you get people in the country where they can't invest, you say, anyway. Hello, Cola, you name and who you call me from?
Yeah, I recall from Sports in Lisbon, Oxy Gal.
You welcome on the show, you get.
Yeah, with me one eh, Jagaban, they just left there, but changing of government, we can, we go continue, we go. This now the team, see so they happen a salon, under this bad government, any good thing where somebody want carry, they see they in the star ah. People and land, they will land for the appreciate good thing, somebody getting money, not just a new government money, eh, no token, ah, no office it, you know. If not in pass a law money, the poor Madabio don't see here, we have, within at the audit reports. Because now in the post president who don't set like a body for the, right? This man they didn't, and then I you money will go so far for, why they not allow the man? This are backwardness that the country, to be honest with you. And secondly, with me one person concerning this ID card of ECSL. Um, maybe APC, they don't see the bigger picture, because Madabio now, sorry, side on the way go on pass by the number seven side, floats the ball. I see, go floats and so, electric upside, we are not the one, but this scene ah, the we are don't come play. So you don't see, it better than they press them, let them press them more and more, if you then press there are more things they come on ah. Okay, Allah, thank you very much.
Thank you, brother man, God bless you.
Good evening.
Cola, you welcome on the show, you get one minute thirty seconds.
Ah, my thank you, that God bless now. Now one, now one thing I call you see, see sometime, you see development? But actually, I think say for manage by Kuma come, come to Madabio. Some of them come out and build house, you didn't have come out, me does see ah, understand, I don't forget about that side eh. See sometime, this one the way they just fight Jagaban because of development in your town, I think see, that nah, nah, eh. Black, black, black badat. You know one thing, yes, you don't do am because of eh, politics, but let them leave the politics aside, and make development grow na Blama. Me, to me, hey God, you know, you know what, people have get small brain, they know they think better. Let me, let me tell you, we the move for it, people get small eh, freedom. Can you talk quick? Eh, yeah, speak, we know they think, thank you very much, God bless.
All right, thank you, brother man. Hello, Cola, you name and who side you call me from?
Yes, now, now, good evening, now, when I do.
We tell Allah, thank you, you say.
Uh, now they make from Banga.
All right, go ahead, you get one minute thirty seconds.
You know, uh, me, I just want for talk to the people of Blama. This, now the real badat is where people in the top part. But if they have been say, the one they really can't stop this work, now again, they suffer. Or they are where they are the Blama to, now they get for suffer, let them think wisely and vote wisely. Because this, no one not get for tell you against, see, then people are the here to now, goodness can for can make we are better. We are picking their life, and then they can't stop ah, just because nah, of the other party. It not makes sense, so the people in a Blama, now we are all know we are the neck now, and we are the only neck now. It, 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 the, the, the ball done eh, now, now, of course now, if we are the take party, pass your life. Okay, but if we are the take your life, we are picking a future, then we will vote wisely, and then bring Jagaban in the future for another future. We are place, we will wait, demand land for future, and that's the one we get for the program.
Thank you, God bless you. Hello, Cola, you name and who side you they call me from? Hello, Cola?
Oh, hello.
You welcome on the show, you name and who side you call me from, please?
Um, I, I call from London, me I call, concerned citizen.
Go ahead, you get one minute thirty seconds.
First of all, I wanna say thank you to la for the good job we are the do, and let God continue for strengthening la. Let God continue for good na the wisdom, because honestly, it takes a lot for, on a for sit down there. And honestly, like, can like a we, not for, now, not for the no, but good thing eh, so, I want for tell on a thank you. And one thing back where I will tell for say is, I know say them people in there, they not, me know say they not want to good for the safe. But do ya, they can wish so we the big, we get three people eh, na this side, we na, Watalo. By eh, eh, Sima Town, and they will hold this side and day. For a very long time, people in the suffer, they for, for water and for lights. Do ya, if we are able pass this message for we to, to Mister Jagaban, let it go there and support same community in there. Then they suffer, people in the suffer na they here in there, they can wish so who the come out see ah, na this side, they na they will get your family. Who the go there, we the suffer for lights.
All right.
So do ya, and see they say they not want, we be want.
Thank you.
And we know who that we get for vote for, thank you very much, God bless so now.
You welcome, God bless you too. Hello, Cola, you name and who side you call me from, please?
Yeah, I recall from Chat Cross, I'm good eh.
You welcome on the show, you get one minute thirty seconds.
Yeah. Uh, try we, Jagaban, Jagaban already is eh, the people they consider on the developments. And the one they win at the elder, they become to the people, the people they accept the, the development. Like just see, the media only too much required by APC this time yeah, now according to the books, let them know eh, by you like way, understand, try for unite the country. Help plan do everything at the same time back in January, this time, who has no seriously they suffer, we both, which time come go development, now they go find they go develop. Or for somebody for say pass, it better, we post one better left ah, at the, at the address I do meet eh, then they look to, Jagaban will look to people eh. If you vote for him, beside this tier, we do ah, we do, which time come, eh, who they go, profit you, promise we make, they left them for this time. And no contribution ah, but I think, that's what I want to ask. I want, I want ask, so to this debate for the president, eh, President Jack, this is not the happen this time, like ah, the happen during August time, I want ask.
Well, um, we not go able give any information, but that is, but anything we come up, we will make we are know.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Hello, Cola, you name and who side you call me from? Reduce the volume of your sex, please.
Hello?
Hello, Cola?
Yes, now good evening, Sunday eh, and bye bye. Yeah, thank you, me now I concerned citizen.
Go ahead, one minute thirty seconds.
Okay, I want for tell la, thank you, then I want for tell Mister Jagaban, thank you for the good work we he don't do. This man no, thief no need, he not even sit down, he just try for help, but do ya, me I the talk to la, I know say Jagaban the listing. We get plenty side eh, we, they need help, that's all. Like Tom Colingba, so we rode from Cambia for go Medina, that would be bad, say bad. If Blama people, I say they not want that project, they, we want the project, they made the project go through eh. Do ya na for beg Jagaban, if they say they not want ah, other pe, other side in day. Salalungans in there where they suffer, other place in day, because of people in are selfish, then they try for satisfy other person, then, then they, then they suffer. Now this turn on a term of awareness, even if they satisfy other person, they, they kill yourself inside, do ya would ah, help the want ah? Say Tom Colingba, they want ah, say na, one Limba, pick him, make me they talk so, say do ya? This is, I say make a call, we are not to, now say they help, they give me Jagaban come, we are Tom Col, we want ah. Yeah.
All right, we take few more calls because time not in our favor again and round up the program. Call and take part in the program, we take five more calls for round up the program for today edition. This, now we are who they bring you, issues of Mama Salon, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Kiate Cabio don't stop Jagaban in development, a Blama, he say, nobody. Oh, la la. Sister, you welcome.
Hi, hello, me people on a Facebook and me people.
Sister Admin, you, you, are we asking a direct call?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let me call back.
All right, they don't stop Jagaban, SLPP, Kiate Cabio say, and in council. Jagaban offer bring development na the tongue way in bone, you imagine that? You welcome again, Sister Admin.
Yeah, now, okay, yeah, so I hope say we all do, do well na Facebook and YouTube and everybody else, uh, we get for listen later. But uh, me, I just want for thank the people eh, we um contribute to uh, Sister Umo, uh, for make Umo go getting help back, so. Um, we really appreciate to now, we thank you now so, so, so much for our contributions then. Who say their money they are come out, so let God almighty bless now, let go make, you know, we all are the yard family members eh. Whether if you give money, you not give, because we not see if we are get ah, we are the give, so let God bless now, who say they come out, let God reward now, let God give now more. Let go make now, never, never lack, so I really thank now, we appreciate now for get now, uh, you know, you guys are wonderful now, now just amazing. For anytime when we bring come issues eh, na the yard family, we are ready for, um, take up their issues and eh, and make sure say. You know, we eye on things the mouth, we are there for good school, we are there, we are need well body, all the thing eh, we the helps, I want for thank you now from the bottom of me heart and him also. Um, so, um, I just want for say that, I don't get nothing else for say because, you know, everything else is just so crazy, which they go on a salon, you know, development wise. Badat, 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 I, I don't, I don't understand, I for say we not get for die, but anyway, now that's no more, thank you.
Thank you, Sister Admin, you will. Hello, uh. Hello, Cola, you name and who side you call me from?
Yeah, we had a recall from Washington, we had, me, I want for blame the people eh, you, the youth man them, na Kenny Ma, na they not for blame. Because then na they na the youth them, now we are, now we are the good hands, now we are the make enjoyment at the, na, 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 the village, so now we are need. The, the, the community center a more important to now, if somebody don't come for can be, if they develop this thing for now. Don't, we are the, the council, they come for can't stop ah, we after this thing not for long for over three years, as Jagaban talk. Over three years, this council not come for can't fix ah, now, now we somebody don't come for can't fix ah, then they can't talk say, then they fix ah. You know, I dey blame the youth them, trust me, I dey blame the youth them, this are the problem, this are African man problem, African man, you know, but, but. In our mind, he suffer everybody just for in one green cell fish net, you know, he suffer the one oh, eh, eh, other people eh. Just in, he satisfying say for now, and this is bad, a bad, bad mentality, I don't get so, but God sorry for we.
All right, we take three more calls. Hello, Cola, you name and who side you they call me from?
Yeah, we had, we are good evening, they not concern citizens, now they call for the corner. Waiting for say, for them, yeah, yeah, thank you, then people are not go stop at, nothing. Eh, let them fully this, waiting this man, it's guy for do, they pull ah, na the east, crangle na the west, pull ah, na the west, crangle na the south, they will try for for straight ah. So from this on now, we for, uh, encourage Jagaban, we tell and thank you for all the good work we do. Make it with, by God in power, governments will change, because he has red, eh, lending, for making guys to help you community, then they can't see they have to they have. They not go stop at, nothing, they want the way they big say, let the project go that side, this is SLPP government, Faro Ta government. They are not for the people of Sierra Leone, we are thank you, we are push eh, okay, so we the think about um, the waiting for the election yeah? We go tip in, by God in power, okay, we are have a good evening.
Thank you.
You will.
Two more calls. Mister Kamara, you welcome.
Yes, I see I just want for say, um, like Jagaban, if he check, not to give Blama ago, he listen to them, kill it. Like now, so many good cities, just like old South America, run from city, America, and come to second one for us. It's same thing like, but about, uh, Blama has become a second one, because we are finally, we don't do this, 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 nothing, nothing like this. So we don't believe, we don't believe, we don't believe, we are give you all the report of all a factor, so I use see, we are really feel development. It's a really good base, I don't believe in development, especially we don't belong to there, maybe they go like, go call the back, how we are there, eh, what are, we are a veteran. We don't believe to me, like, me, for us, no. So you go for, you want for tell it to whatever, they say, no, 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 what happened? So, you know, I try to go from the party, what's you the politics on the party, I don't think we want for say, just for yeah.
Thank you, Mister Kamara. All right, we take one more call for round up the program for today. One more call, the last lucky caller. The last lucky caller for today edition. Anyway, as we the wait for the last lucky caller, okay, he don't come inside. Hello, Cola, you name and who side you call me from?
Hello, hello. Mina, yeah, I recall from Kuwait.
You welcome on the show.
You're welcome on the show.
Yeah, I tell you, I thank you, the two I ask now, because like, I'm not, I'm not can get chance for where they dead, like, for where they look on our life. But I always go online for see, what we are face come for the day, but I don't tell me they acting like, if it still work, tell me that side of us.
Yeah, then I do.
Yes. Actually, look, they, yeah, because we tell, they get chance for look lines, but I like anything, a second one I like.
Not the same, yeah?
Okay then, then the thing I reach out, we tell Jagaband, thank you, may God continue for bless, I may add grace for us, do ya Jagaband, Kenny man, they, they not want. We get people, we need at the Arab board, we want it too, if we able to return this, then it don't do well for them, you don't do well for them. Just try for, the people, and see the country, they not want developments, right, so another plan, incident, that way they find, you know. So, the way, the way they go pull that, get face come inside, then they are not see, they are not stop, you say, maybe they not come. Then they, they are no baby, are no, they are not good, they, then you they face make up, do ya me, F me, I say this, no, get see people, people, the way they see, who, where, like, one, one lady, they will become Kuwait. Wait in Bobby, get cancer, they want go do operation, do ya me looking to the people, eh, they may express, so we do along with the date.
Alright, thank you, God bless you, now we take the bonus call for tonight. Hello, Cola, your name and who side you, I wish now woman, they will put this bonus call, your name and who side you call me from?
Hello, Maridji from California, I can always be the last lucky caller.
Perfect, the last lucky caller, now woman.
Okay, yes, okay, me own contribution, nah, that, beyond a shame, they they shame, because waiting, they not able for do, for five good years. This man don't can do am, so they just feel embarrassed, they don't want make it do am at all, that's not just, just the reason, we make them stop them. So let the man just stop, just like the last, the last caller, say, let he wait until government change, and by God's grace, he go change, then he can continue. That's my own, we are thank you for the good work, we enjoy the program, alright, thank you.
Bless you and your family.
Right.
Alright, family members them, now so, we don't take with time for take, with family members then call, and we don't drop the phone call for today till tomorrow. Anyway, make we watch this video again, you know, they say, when people them do good, you get for really make the no see, then do good. And what is they tell now, see, inside this family house, we compliment people them, where they alive, the more you do good, where you they alive, now the more we they give you the credit. Meaning, we are not save life, and not to today we are beginner, we proud of now, and other people them. Where they nah corner, where they see what you now they do as family members, they are proud of now, with sister Umu. Today, he get what you call cheers of joy, he de cry, but inside art, now it happiness, because he tell we say, he be don't suffer, and he be done to suffer. Until now, we God make, what he even be they expect for cut input again, you know, right, after God, with we are, we are, we are watch this video again, and see the good work, we are gonna do for the sister.
Hello, me family them. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, any part you are doing at the wall? Yeah, me now, nah, sister Umu. We have a problem with food, we have been asked for help, for me to help me for the sake of God, for seasons. If you are first, if you are going to donate money, maybe you are, you are giving eleven million to India, we, we use them for, who do they drive me? Nah, the food, and the medication, because. We only are there on verge for now, for over a month now, are there on verge. So we had, they sent all the money, they, they, inside that eleven millions hundred, we, they be sent for me. Then today again, it's then send for me eighteen million five hundred, one of the money, that I see at the video, so, then look the foot. So, I suppose for go do skin grafting, when they cut some part of me body, and stitch them on the foot, so. At this procedure, are they go do with this money, cause I get for doing medication inside there now, admission and all the rest. So I tell you now, plenty, plenty, thank you, I tell you now, thank you, may God bless you now all, as soon I can see, save all the foot there. Because now only the problem, are the toes them back, as soon I can see, the toes them fall, you know, what I say, after the skin grafting now, then. Then go the, find way out for treat the foot again, the toes them, cause toes them, bend on the fall, and they fear falling, they will be gangling box, then they put me, and, and they on treatment for them. So I tell now plenty, thank you, we had, now thank you, all the team of we have, now thank you, thank you to sister Amnata. Thank you to the sister, now here we, I recall the monitor, and thank you to everybody, all man, we donate, whatever little, you know, small, I appreciate everybody. The one they say, we see me video, so if for me, they will give me not, remember me pray, may God help them, God give them more, so I appreciate so much, I really glad, I really appreciate. I don't have for tell now, thank you, I tell God thank you, because I don't they suffer, I don't they struggle so much, because before, eh, we had in the interview. This been don't be a problem in the life, because I just been don't for go, nah, everything I take, until they for cut me foot back, while my hand be don't cut. But we interview, we, we had them, help me on treatment, and fight them for me, in the prayers, and from the people them, at least everybody donate, so we are not try for me.
Alright, um, with family members them, that not a voice of sister Umu, you see Mrs Awa, they talk about sister Umu, and they smile, because we know. Usai, we are as family member, with the help of God, Usai, we all don't put on together for take sister Umu in life, and Usai sister Umu in life. They, like a today, they right now, as we talk, and sister Umu herself, you know, eh, say, eh, no able for know how, for even begin, for tell you now, thank you, we are as family members them. But he just get for do this video, for make we are no see, the goodness on a sent to Ram, don't meet them, and the goodness on a sent to Ram, don't save in life. From the side, what he be the expect in life, we not for be good, for himself say, well, sister Umu say, he tell you now, thank you, and it ask we. Me, Baburem, and Shembe Phe, including the team, sister admin and others, for make we all tell you now, thank you, for this kind goodness, we are not do. For this kind save, we are not save in life, and sister Umu say, make we all pray for now, as soon I don't do this, not for in no more, but now, the turn don't reach to Ram. Make God continue for provide for now, so we are the save more life them. Anyway, this, now someone thinks them, where we had, family they do, this now for you, we can ask, what you now don't do? When, we always they tell you say, we, not to do something, for can't tell you say, nah, this you don't do, like say, we can campaign. For go stand election, or for go take government position, mm mm, what you we they do, God they use we, and family members them, for do am, for save life them. You ain't know, just the, eh, they now you corner, for the year eh, the testimony them, where people, eh, they can give, now this family house. But how we family house, they save life, nah, Mama Salon, we not it do am for you, we not it do am for go take position, we not it do am for go take office now salon, but we do am for save life. And family members them, for any time, where we bring issues, the way concern saving people in life, helping people. They are ready, they not ever get good, come say, when we go prepare, immediately, that case that they meet we, we present that case them, they, not a family house. They are ready for take over that case then they, so for that one day, Mrs F, they join sister Umu, for tell now plenty, thank you, on behalf of, we had management. We say plenty, thank you to you now all, and we the join sister Umu in prayer, for make God continue for provide for you now. You can see that, one euro, one dollar, one pounds, you name the different currency them, we are the usual, so we are the, we are the, if you say, eh, no, eh, no make sense.
We not to kind of young killer.
But. But, it makes sense to people them life, because that one euro, one dollar, one this, one that, where you they send, for save somebody life, they go change things them, for save that person in life. So we tell now plenty, plenty, thank you, well, until we meet again tomorrow, now another beautiful edition, inside the same family house, who call, we had me, by break of life from. The north, with a sharp escort, let's say, ta ta, I love you now, nasty bless.
We, we not to kind of young killer, we tomorrow, they tell you, that today, on the, on the, alive with the cell. Sorry, I'm on that. Okay, eh, me name that's Shembe Phe, the freedom fighter, okay, until we meet again, this another beautiful edition. Hmm, if you both go call we, I don't know.